Before, we'll start with a rule call. Kaita, Jan, Cory, Gray, and myself. Day number two, Cheaton Outpost update. To get this head up here, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk a little about our school store, the Cheaton Outpost, tonight. I hope it gives you a better understanding of what a great experience it is for our students over at OHS. If you had not been there before, I do have a short little clip so you can kind of see firsthand what it's all about. Well, that's on this next slide. It's just a quick little video. There it comes. So it kind of played this ultimately to drop some promotion for the holidays. But it's a sneak little peek of current inventory and it's all decorated for the holidays. What you're seeing ultimately is inventory that has been designed, picked out, selected by our students. Obviously trying to help promote and spread some Cheaton pride and adult and youth sizes. Kind of how it all started, ultimately being able to conversation. So this is my eighth year here at OHS. So back in 2016, I had a conversation with First National Community Bank. Their marketing promoter at that time, she was since moved on. Somerset, they assisted Somerset getting their school store started. They knew I came in with some experience. So we had a conversation that started organically and it kind of evolved to have my entrepreneurship class at that time, creative business plan. We invited the bank to come in, presented our ideas, and then almost day before graduation, they came in and presented a big check, so just like the movies per se, to kind of give us $10,000 so they started. So my previous experience, I was at North St. Paul and just got a little bit of touch. I wasn't completely involved in the store then, and I went to elsewhere and I got a lot of experience there. So I was able to use that background and apply it here at OHS. I just saw the value of it and the need ultimately to kind of get a central location, to connect community to our school and again be able to spread some Cheaton pride and get students involved in the operations of the school store. Next up, just kind of a breakdown really quick so you can kind of understand where the $10,000 went to. So this is our initial kind of breakdown. It's obviously getting started. So we're in the old, you can get old TV curriculum lab.
ATV room.
ATV room. So pictures of obviously technology, just a good piece, obviously inventory and just kind of overall starting our account. So that $10,000 has allowed us to really expand. Next slide is just going to give us a little indication of ultimately our gross revenue. So you can kind of see from the bottom is 2017, 2018, so that was our first year of operation. So this is obviously money coming in. Obviously we have the expenses to go. 2020, 2021, obviously COVID was a big factor in that. But again, kind of setting some goals each year, kind of refining things a little bit. At the top is this year, obviously we can see some six months to go. But I think we felt it a little bit, I guess. Our sales are down a little bit. I think that's just kind of the economy as a whole is kind of reflected in that. So just sales from fall and a little bit down from holiday as well. So we'll see what happens here in our next six months. Next slide is going to be kind of just an indicator of profit, just so you can kind of see. So 2017 is going to be on your left-hand side, 2023 is on your right-hand side here. Again, with six months to go, we had an awesome year last year, so you can see kind of blue things out of the water. So obviously kind of connecting different things that we did with promotion. And it's obviously, you know, picking out some good stuff that people appreciated. We do have a savings account that is kind of separate at First National Community Bank. It's kind of set aside, so right now there's over $4,500 in there in addition to that. So this is not counting that into the data for the bar chart there. Ultimately, it is run by volunteers, so we love our volunteers. Those volunteers are students, mostly business students. Quite a few of them are my affiliate members, Future Business Leaders of America members. As you can see, over 120 hours already. Plus four of those have more than 10 hours in the store, three of them 10, 15 hours, and three of them over 20 hours. If you take a look, I even had some fourth graders in there. My daughter and her friend sometimes manage it because high school students are busy. Next up, just kind of indicating how we integrated into our curriculum here at OHS. And it's kind of broken up into the three trimesters kind of really quickly. Trimester one, they take care of the staff order. So they kind of do the selection, take in the order and then distribute that homecoming order. The last few years, we've had some different options. At the high school, it's their class shirt, class logo. But other students, I would like to get some new Cheaton gear. So we offered three different price points, a t-shirts, some of the essentials, pom poms, tattoo scenes of that nature. So they pick it, select it, and then help distribute that. In addition to that, new holiday designs kind of handle that order to get it ready to come in the stores. Trimester two, they handle obviously the holiday traffic, update inventory and help kind of push the product out the door. Trimester three, new guidelines for the next homecoming year. Had that all done before, we had out for summer, figure out what we're going to do for staff and then the new school, new school year. So we need to start that out. Courses that I've used and incorporated, desktop publishing, digital marketing, entrepreneurship. We're hoping to have a little bit of the digital audio video class help us out a little bit too. In addition to that, I kind of utilize a few key people, store managers, kind of the types from your tier two tier people. And they help me kind of behind the scenes. That may always try one. So with handling different operation management and funding and merchandise, things of that nature. We have helped out some different organizations, and here's kind of a list of those just to help with the promotion. Again, trying to be the go-to place, so putting their merchandise within our store and just helping them get their product out and hopefully get some funds back in the end. Our biggest events, Open House is huge and it continues to be. New year, new beer, new look, right? Homecoming is big as well. Holidays, December is big for us. And really the track and field days for the younger kids, bring out inventory. It's a great way to connect to those, ultimately, parents are biggest target market, obviously. They don't always come to OHS, so reaching them when they're at the track for those spring days is amazing for us. Ultimately, if anything, obviously we have some goals. Some of those goals are kind of specific to marketing and business. Obviously increasing sales, having a bigger presence in that school, buildings and the community. This year, we're going to try to actually go to the early childhood days in February and see if it connects those gears that way. Other goals, obviously, just expanding our store products, buying designs, colors, and getting feedback from our customers to kind of meet their needs as well. What is provided ultimately for our students? Kind of a quick list, but growth of students, obviously, and employability skills. We do use point of sale and it's up to date. So obviously they can take that to their own jobs and be able to handle a cash register, things of that nature, right on. Hands-on application in the curriculum, so we're talking about merchandising, talking about pricing, digital merchandising, and choosing, selecting products, and they're making the decisions. It's closer to a wide variety of careers, obviously. Accounting, marketing, merchandising, advertisement, all of the above. Ultimately, the goal is kind of connect the school with the community and kind of reach out and again showcase that Cheaton pride and give them different ways to showcase that. And all the events, sporting, athletic, music, et cetera. And lastly, just kind of opportunity to continue to grow and set some goals to expand our learning lab that we have. Ultimately, thank you. That's kind of a wrap up. Obviously, we couldn't have done this without First National Community Bank's help to get started. It's January, so thank you, school board members, for all you do, kind of recognizing you this whole month. But thank you for your ongoing support, allowing these students again to dive in and take what we're learning in the classroom and apply it immediately into our school store. Obviously, the staff at the high school, affiliate members, students, and ultimately our customers, which is our district residents. We are very grateful to continue to help us grow and learn and expand and showcase our Cheaton pride. Are there any questions?
How is working in the district when you kind of think about what's out there? And it's just been so fun to see it really grow. I am very impressed with your sales during COVID. That's, I thought that was a lot. It's just, I like all the different opportunities for the kids. I mean, it's kind of, I'm excited to see what the digital audio class can do too, to see how that grows and how it impacts so many different kids in the building.
You like their design and shopping there.
Well, I love to shop there. Do the kids do much with the budgeting piece or not as much?
Not a ton.
Yeah.
So ultimately, the majority of our profits go back into merchandising. So we kind of take a look at that and kind of take a look at the needs and wants. And then, so they have a piece in it, per se. So whether we have $4,000 to spend for next fall roughly, it's kind of from kind of then. Now, some of our inventory, sometimes you have to buy 80 water bottles. So you don't have to order water bottles for a couple of years, so that kind of, so we talk about that too, right? It's not necessarily sell 80 water bottles within nine months' time, so sometimes it lingers a little bit, but. Hi, so looking for a vendor, if you can connect me to a vendor. That has been a very tough one to get back on the market, so 100% we're still a very good vendor per se.
I know you put a lot of hours in, so thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Item three, aligning and developing our facilities to best meet education needs in elementary schools. Day is review of the school, elementary school referendum resolution. All right, we're just going to bring up the resolution. I hope that we did everything that's on the line with us as well, so that we can, I can say on the line. Yep, I did. So if there's questions that we can answer based on what you see here. The intent of the resolution was to ensure that we had flexibility and that we made sure that we have covered all of the pieces as far as the purpose of how we use the dollars. What questions you have, wonders?
I have, I have some that I sent to Becky that I was a little concerned with. So it talked about the buildings and grounds at the intermediate and middle school. I'm assuming the grounds is really more for the intermediate school except for the playground equipment here at the middle school, is that correct?
It depends on what we can figure out. If we have to do something bigger than grounds, then we would have the flexibility to do so.
But only at those two sites?
Well, what if we have to relocate? How many ball fields do we have down at the elementary school? If we sell that property, all of those ball fields get used all spring and summer. So you'll want it that we can take those and move them some calls. Because that's the only baseball uses them all. How many, you know how many ball fields you have, seven? And then we're losing the one at the intermediate school with expansion, so Andrew, when we go to the bathroom, he's like, oh. Come on, spot. How many ball fields we have at elementary school? Six? Five or six? Five, and then one at the intermediate school there? That is, that is used as an overflow for especially. Yep, yeah, so that's because I specifically asked that too. I said, I wanted to make sure it wasn't, that it could accommodate us doing that. Because that could potentially, if we sold the grounds, we'll want to repossess those fields. And I'm not saying we're selling, but you want the wording to encompass all of that, so we have the flexibility to do this.
Right, because that was some of my concerns even after our last board meeting, before we even got the resolution, was if we sold the building and we then have to use the million dollars or whatever that's allocated in the budget, what happens to that million dollars? Because if we had to, I would like to see us then repay our debt and give that money back to the taxpayers. That's, that's my concern, because then the next sentence, it says renovate and/or demolish all parts of the elementary. We haven't talked about, anything about renovation of an elementary school.
So Jan, I can chime in on that one. I had asked them to add that language to give the district some specific flexibility. A hypothetical scenario where a buyer approaches the district and says, I'm making this up, obviously. I'll give you $100,000 for the building as it sits today. But I'll give you a million dollars if you tear down the oldest sections of the school and just keep the 1990s, the newer section for me. This would give you the ability to invest some of the dollars that were allocated for full demolition, demolish the oldest sections, clean up the areas that are, where those connections currently occur, and now sell it for more money than you could have before. If we only have, the prior language was the only thing the dollars could be used were for demolition, that was just limiting. There's no reason you can't completely demolish that building. There's going to be two plus years that involve from the time the referendum passes till consideration of demolition would even occur. And so during that window of time, the board will have to make the decision, likely towards the end of that window of time, what you want to do. Everything from do nothing to demolish the whole thing, sell it as is, to partial demolition, all of those are on the table for you as a board. And this language allows the board to make that decision. And to your point, if you sell it and you don't spend the dollars, the board gets to decide what to do and one option every board talks about is just pay down the debt. That's an option the board will have as well.
Well, and I'm just concerned because it's, it's $38 million. And I think to the taxpayers that I have talked to, they're really concerned about the dollar amount that that's costing, right? So if in the conversation we have to try to sell the referendum, if it's not going to be used, that'll be used to pay down the debt. Granted, it's a small impact when you do that over the life of the 20 years of the debt. But it is still giving the money back to the taxpayers in the end. So that's the only reason I'm asking. People have asked me, and so I'm just bringing it out.
But it would be a board decision either way, right? That's my understanding.
Right, it'll be whatever at the time, who's ever on the board. Then the other question I have, any of the equipment acquired, that's for the addition in intermediate and for the fifth grade classes in the middle school. It's not district-wide or whatever, it's just for what's in that $38 million.
Correct, because it says related to said projects, that would in my opinion limit those dollars to only be used.
For the fifth grade and the K4.
Yeah, we aren't calling it fifth grade though, it's middle school.
Right.
The intermediate slash elementary and middle schools would be the two buildings or sites that those dollars could be used for. Technically, you could use it for equipment at the current elementary school. We know that's not going to happen, right? Because that's not what you're talking about. But you are correct that that's what it's limited to. You couldn't use it, for example, at the high school.
Right, but can you use it in the other part of the intermediate school that's not being added on to?
Yes, you could by purpose language, I believe you could.
Right, because we're going to need to in the kitchen. We have to real fit the kitchen.
But that's in the, that's in the current, that's in the current budget part.
But it's equipment acquisition related to those projects.
What's, what's already spelled out in the budget?
Do you mean the third, when you say budget, do you mean the 38?
Yeah, that we saw last board meeting in what was spelled out in that.
Line by line.
There are allocations within the budget for equipment at both buildings, whether it's furniture, whether it's a make it a router or a switch to make your IT system work when we need more data ports in the building, whether it's food service equipment, playground equipment. So that's why this is a broad, all-encompassing term, equipment, that is limited to be used on the sites that are described above. It doesn't say which room, which piece of equipment, how much that piece of equipment costs, obviously. But it is limiting in terms of the fact, okay, I'll use that example, it can't be used at the high school based on this language.
Right, I just, I don't want it to, like, we used to be having, we have a million dollars and then we're trying to find ways to spend that million dollars. If we have a million dollars left, that it's returned to the taxpayers through a down payment on the debt. That's my concern, so.
And I think as Brooke has mentioned, that that will be, whatever constitutes the board at that time, will have to make that decision. I will generally say when that happens, most boards have that conversation. That is one of the options they consider. Obviously, we can't sit here and say that's going to happen because it's a board decision at that time. But your, to your point, Jan, I hope we're in the position where you have a million dollars three years from now that you're talking about, that you're having that tough conversation around.
Other questions, concerns? And that brings us to the review of bond referendum timeline. Yeah, April put that up there. Just wanted to make sure that we all were, this is the checklist from the attorney of pieces and parts that April and I, Morton, will need to make sure that we do so that everybody sees how that rolls out in order for the referendum to happen and make sure that we are doing all the correct notifications. Any questions on that? That brings us to item C then, brainstorm referendum communication ideas. So on Monday next week, the team will be meeting with a brain hiring team and talking about how we're going to do the whole of the communication, right? Ultimately, that's the most important piece of all this. Just wondering if you had any super cool ideas that have just been resonating in your brain that we hope we could. Comedy night?
That would be super cool.
On the other side of, let's talk about this building?
Yes.
Anything that you think on other districts that you think that we should be looking at? I mean, we have the ideas from what we've done in the past and what our districts have talked to us about. And I'm sure at the school board convention, there will be, there's always sessions on that too, just wanted to see what other districts are doing. Because I know the most impactful thing that people have talked to me about are the pictures that Andrew provided us. So having that kind of information about what is it at the building that makes it outdated, that is really important, but when you think about that, that takes more than a flyer, right? It has to be like a newsletter almost to, as far as any of it goes. So I know I put lots of pictures and all the videos, so pretty impactful. Right, social media is great, except for the fact we're going to make negative comments on the posts. So that's something that we just need to pay attention to.
I'm going to say the timeline, because then you get to the safety issue too, you know, on people. Our kids, our state.
Any thoughts?
I don't know how to do it, because privacy and confidentiality, but the impact of seeing our kids. Maybe it's not our kids, but. Sure, why?
Yeah, I feel like we have to back over to the other path, right? See if work or death at that point in time, but I think we've gotten that here. My partners are to help build, they've done this many times, we're probably as mighty as we could want to be.
Yeah, that was pretty great. April talked about the referendum in neighboring districts. And every entryway had that life-size poster, the big tall posters, no one used to have those, there were three of them at every entryway, so that as you walk in, people who are curious can see them. But again, it has to be graphically aware. It's not just when you leave the building, it's the years that lie. Okay, I just wanted to make sure if someone had something that was for sure they wanted us to do, we had on the list?
I think the website is a big component, and I know you guys have done a really good job of managing that in the past. But I also heard the postcards hitting mailboxes as a big tool. The turnaround is that not a lot of people came to those meetings. But I think getting things in the mail is beneficial. There's just a cost that comes with it to a degree. But I mean, the majority of our voters are the non-parent non-staffs. Connecting the sun is the mountain in front of us, in my opinion.
Yeah, my late door-to-door campaign for this seat, it was a common theme of, it's great that you guys do put a lot of stuff online, but this is what a lot of the older people that have taken the district saying, but I don't, when I try to go online, it's too confusing for me, I'm not tech savvy. So I would appreciate maybe something in the mail, and then, which is why, you know, we did that. Even though our numbers were lower, it could also be because they know that that was just a small stepping stone and we're now, we're closer to it, maybe you have a bigger impact.
I think you can't over-communicate.
I would rather, I would rather over-communicate than, than to have them say, I didn't like you guys, didn't reach out enough.
Well, keeping them, do flyers or postcards in the mail. You miss your fraction of the total, so don't want that to be your idea.
We could buy those cool card decals and we could all put on our vehicles.
I think Cheaton Outpost is my team.
That's an idea. You said super cool.
Super cool, I did, I'm going with it. I think the kid, if you call them, we need to get together, do you offer ice cream?
I know, that's my last comment tonight.
Well, and the other thing is, I think doing it on the school website and not so much social media, because you can control the website. You can't control the social media part. And like you said, the negative comments and then it just runs, writes. But when it's on our website, we control the information and how it's communicated. And when it's on the social thing, it can be copied off or whatever and away it goes and you don't always control that piece of it.
Or all of the most current is in there?
Right.
April's been great about the FAQ's in the past, like every time we get a question, making sure that those make it on to that.
And the videos are cool.
Only want to add about social media, though, is that it reaches a different audience and you can turn a lot of the commenting off. You can restrict comments, really kind of set a boundary so that there's, the only information going out is the information that you guys are putting out. So just something to consider.
So I heard Gavin was going to do that. Like for volunteering.
That's awesome. And I'll put them in here.
Have any thoughts on the idea of how to get information out?
But I'm sure you're right about older community members. They're not on the computer every day, they're not on Facebook every day. They shy away from all of that, and the only way to reach them is through the mail.
Right, because even talking to a couple of them about how they can access our board minutes and everything off the school website, when you actually do it, it's, it's a few clicks. And I can see why it's confusing, because I'll go on to the school I work at or this school and I'm trying to find a principal sports commander or something. And sometimes I'm kind of. And sometimes I'm tired.
Sometimes it does take a couple extra clicks.
You have to know.
Yeah.
Well, and that's the thing, you need to make it so it's as few clicks as possible for them to get the information.
What are we planning to do with the open houses? Community get togethers, yep. Who's barbecuing?
I was just going to say.
I said we're bringing ice cream, I think I teach people. It's my man. Yeah. Is there anything that you have found to be ineffective that you don't think we should try again? Okay, then moving on.
Matt?
It is important.
Matt, you're still on, right?
Yes, Jen.
So are there things that you have seen that have maybe been ineffective in trying to, um, promote our referendum?
Yeah, I think some of it is more perception based, I guess there's a few things I would say that are less effective. Broad-based yard side campaigns that are information based. I think there's a perception that that is an expensive advocacy-based effort that the school district is undertaking. I think the other reason, you guys were just hitting on it, is an overreliance on one specific form of communication and not being very intentional. That print media, the good old newspaper matters, direct mail is very important to a large segment of our community. Social media is important to a large segment of our parent and staff community. So it's more about the right blend and not ignoring any one of them and doing them all effectively than it is anything else. The most effective way frankly is the hardest, which is the word of mouth. It's the direct day-to-day conversation, you and a neighbor, administrator and a parent, really diving deep into the needs and why this is important. But that's obviously the most difficult to accomplish, right? And it's the most organic, so. A big picture, I would say, there's not one specific thing that does or does not work, community to community. I think it's important that there's a broad cross-section of communication types and styles. Some people will make up their mind when they read one postcard on the way from their house to their mailbox pro or con. Others will need to read the same information seven times, six different ways to make up their mind. And we have to be committed as a team to providing all of those options. So that all the different community members who make up their minds differently and process information differently are given the information the way they want it. I think you make a great point regarding the website, I think it's one of the key things we do is we intentionally try to have a. Website address that's published, which is backslash referendum. It's not just go to the district website and hope they find their way to the information. So for the community that's less tech savvy, we want to give them the full website address, even if it's more typing. They're going to get direct access to where they need to be versus expecting them to find it. Um, and the other thing I would say is videos are more and more popular with some. But not the twenty and thirty minute video where we give every last detail of everything. Ten three-minute videos are going to be more effective and more well digested than one thirty minute. So we're going to go through all of that on Monday with the leadership team about kind of what's worked, what hasn't, examples of successful, um, communication plans. Uh, and then we'll be back to the board at some point in January, early February, updating you on where everything is at. One other little piece I forgot, Jen, sorry, was, um, we also found that creating an independent brand for the referendum. That builds upon your current logo, doesn't just replicate your logo, but builds upon it, that it creates a specific identity for the referendum. Because those that see your typical mail pieces, see your logo and just don't pay attention because they don't have a kid in school. Or don't care anymore at this point in their life, if they see referendum, they think taxes, they're much more likely to read it. So as much, we will be looking at a, a brand as well for the referendum campaign that of course builds on your color, your logo. But is specific to the referendum in hopes that what uniqueness allows more attention.
Um, the other thing I was going to say, if you're going to put things in the paper, the sun isn't. It doesn't have the membership of a community that made the people think. So you might have to also use like the leader or one of the other neighboring, um, papers. Because the outreach of the sun, um, in the ICL, the school district is as big as people think.
The other just reminder is that in twenty twenty-two, school perceptions community that was sent out, we specifically asked community members. How they wanted to receive information. And so that's got mailings, the sun newsletters down, all the way down to TV, radio, et cetera. So we'll be using that as well to, just as a reminder of how your community members want to receive information. And we should trust that it's really reliable data and. I will say every community is different, but every community isn't different and that our non-parent non-staffs still loves to just get things in the mail or read it in paper. So that's consistent across all districts.
The TV and radio, all about the radio, Matt, all about the radio.
I, and I would tell, you will see on Monday, don't spend a ton of time on it because only two percent of your respondents felt it was important. Doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, but I would focus my weekly effort on a radio campaign.
And I hope.
All right. Give, ask the old head of radio station.
I don't even know, the sound we go for radio station is, well, somebody does.
Amy does.
Amy does too, yeah. The school class? All right.
So use the marketing students from the high school.
Yeah, that's fun. For referendum stuff, but, you know, it's a great language, go with it.
I mean, yeah, I create content, yeah, absolutely.
Can I add one, one thing? And I know this is somewhat different than the environment that I was used to, but. I was the president of a farm, farmer-led watershed in the Horse Creek area. We held a lot of meetings and a lot of events to have people attend to. Listen to what we did in the watershed, what incentives were available to them. Uh, unfortunately, the only way to get large numbers was offer food. Popcorn or burgers or what, I, I'm not saying maybe this is a line that we maybe shouldn't or should think about, but. Food always brings people in and.
That kid's doing that ice cream.
Crafts bring people in and food brings people in. Crafts, we're going to scrapbook. While you're crushing. Referendum project. Good point, thank you.
I think you have to look at the events that are happening around the community, like in the next. And you almost have to, all the way through March, because early voting is. I don't know, ends what, those two weeks before the election? So, um, people are already making up their mind and march and voting early, so you have to kind of keep that in mind.
All right. Do we have any good community things coming up between March, now March, there's gonna be like winter. MC year.
Along my band is this Thursday.
You're darn right.
What's the, the donkey basketball thing?
Donkey basketball, right now.
Early learning people.
Child's early, early basketball.
What can your teacher come to when lunch?
And the PTA's home and their, carnival. Oh, yeah, you have winter carnival. PTA is all kinds of. And then of course sporting events and, um. Constal, constal.
We do it now at the bottom of the, we are now.
We can say we're having a referendum.
But you can't play.
Let's see what it is, I just can't encourage people to vote, yeah, creative.
Although like while they're broadcasting, I'll be in the stands yelling, vote John!
All right. Thought you'd in the video board could advertise when we have our community get togethers. What about the Osceola Firefitters Ball? That's in February.
The Osceola on Gun Club, I have another one. Can you do, take it over to my.
I'll find Choff though.
That's what I'm saying, events outside of the school where people.
Where people can get information and then they can digest it and decide what they want to do with it. That's to me what's super important is so they have all of the information. You just can't get that from a conversation by looking at a webpage and think so.
And you might connect with someone who doesn't get that information.
Any else on this? I'm ready. I'm assuming most of you are helping us unless you're really intrigued about our special and educational enrollment availability.
I'll be, we'll be back later, Brooke.
Item four is improving our instructional strategies for student learning, review of regular and special education enrollment, enrollment availability for twenty-four, twenty-five. The way this model works and. You tricked us. I, I believe that this has been brought to the board in the previous year, so the format should look similar, but. It's a breakdown of the projected headcount versus the four twenty-five, looking at section sizes and then I was confused from actual number to that exception size. To get the productive section. Four, and then you have second after that, and it is, um, possible if I could project four twenty-five, but then the. Projected for students, we had a target mass per class that. It was just determined just for this, yeah, so if you look at the bottom end of the note sign your piece of paper, it talks specifically about this is just for open enrollment differences. An angry green section. Our projected class is for open enrollment students. So if you look at kindergarten. And what happens is, you look at this, is this is what we have for the line. So if we intend to want more kindergarteners here, then we need to say we have a possibility of six sections and we have to suddenly open up seats. So if you wanted to make any modifications in that regard, and the same goes for, you know, says possible sections. If we were to reduce a section at a different grade level, making sure that we have ample spots left. But we can't adjust this after the twenty-fourth, we need to bring it back to you. So just wanted to kind of get a, an understanding of, you know, kindergarten, right? We want to increase our enrollment, so we'll say we close the kindergarten. So then if you, let's say for kindergarten, you change the number of sections to six, that would be like, open twenty seats. And then that would. Essentially if a student popped in, a lot of open enrollment, right? That wasn't special education, then we would, up to twice.
So what happens if. We had two students that wanted to open enrollment, you would go to six sections? Because two new students came, or you would stay at the five? That's, that's my.
That's, we don't, we don't know, because you don't know how many kindergarteners are going to move in there, because that tends to be. It either all stay or six move and then you don't, you don't know.
Right, because you see a lot of movement in the lower grades. Some families tend to move more than.
I don't think you'd ever want to say no to a student coming in, that doesn't seem right. So I think we have to make some considerations to make sure that we have the availability to.
And what's interesting is I remember the projected headcount, but current four K is pretty small. So this is assuming you're going to be adding a bunch of students plus. So to your point, Jen, two kids to the current four K isn't going to take us to these numbers. This is the old air model of taking overtime, how much we've increased and the super cool formula that we use. It's not the number of what we have now, just accelerating.
Right, I'm just concerned though, okay, so we get, we end up with a hundred and two, does that make us go to six sections? Six sections, I'm saying.
We have to have a conversation about that. Okay, because just like the four K in kindergarten now is a little bit tricky, what are the numbers going to be? Four K more than kindergarten? But yes, we would have to allow them in unless we close it. So what we decided to do as far as section numbers would be the board's decision, unless you elected a zero. Unless you have to do a zero, and we wouldn't accept any. We would say.
So you wouldn't even accept any open enrollment kids, but if they actually moved here, they would be fine. And our current four K is like at eighty, right? So that's like twenty kids.
And that's why leaving it open to me feels like a good move on our heart for enrollment purposes. And see that, because if we gained twenty-two kids, that would be awesome. And it would be worth having a six section. Especially at that age, to retain them all the way through.
So if you went to six sections for that, and it's higher for six sections of that?
No, because right now it's in the. So we have to see where we actually, why, so we wouldn't. These, these numbers are not how it will end up, it's just to set the numbers.
And we have to have it open, because I can't imagine us telling people, yeah, we're not going to build a new school or, because our enrollment numbers are down. But open, open enrollment people are there, we're just not going to allow them to continue. Continue to, the only thing I've ever heard, so I think it's so obvious, we need to allow as many as possible to come in.
So we'll bring it back to you with that changed to six.
But then, I, my eye also goes to four K with three, and fifth grade with seven, those are pretty low numbers. But maybe, I mean, historical data, probably maybe gain, I don't know.
Fifth grade's probably fine.
So what are the enrollment at kindergarten right now? Does anyone know?
Around a hundred, I think.
No, it's a cohort formula.
Because our four K is around eighty, right? And that's kind of where the projection is for next year, if you went off of the demographic study, which I know. Or lower, so. So then that three could really be twenty kids in four K, if you went off of that.
Their headcount versus the four K this year is forty-four, seventy-one.
Seventy-one, so that's, so that's really.
But it's not tying your hands to how many staff you have, to me, why would. To me, why would you not open it up? To accommodate any open enrollment faculty in.
Where it is a little tricky, but if you open it up and you still have to honor it. So if you have a lot of in district kids that come in and you say, we're going to still offer twenty open enrollment seats. You'd still have to honor the twenty that you offered, even if you had twenty.
In, in, which is a good problem to have, right?
So it's just the fact that they're saying that you just have to honor the numbers that you have when you open it. Regardless if they're, if you give the regular students, they just still have to honor those seats.
So how hard is? The number of students per section? Is it, is it set nineteen, that there's more than nineteen in a class, we end up having a new class? For four K? I mean, that's where I think people are going to get. Like, okay, so we have more kids than that. Say we had twenty-four kids, so does that make us go to six sections? I'm just asking you questions, I'm not.
If you're saying twenty-four kids in a four K classroom, yes.
Like in one classroom and the rest were nineteen.
Separate model, yeah.
Right.
But getting to twenty-four K is normal board to have a comp. That's when we added the sixth teacher at Christmas time two years ago, the current first graders. It was that situation where, hey, we're sitting on this level, we need to do something. So it really depends on numbers. And again, this barrier model is assuming growth. And that's not what we've been seeing, so we have to be conscious of that. And leave some seats open to see where we end up. We don't have policies in the states that if you reach a threshold that. So increasing the four K and K so that there are more seats available. Okay, Chad, thank you.
And that would bring us to special education.
Okay, so I will chat a little bit about special education. It's obviously very different than the regular education. Guidelines. Really, when we're setting our special ed open enrollment piece, we look at two components. We look at the planning guidelines. So we scroll down just a little bit. There, like I said, it's comprised of two things, planning guidelines, which are a lot of different factors that we have to take into consideration. So federal, state, different special education laws, statutes, rules. Then DPI doesn't put out specific numbers that we put, but it gives different guidance of kind of how to, how to look at these different pieces. There's different state licensing requirements and then we look at our continuum of services. So in each building, how are we providing our special education services based on the students that we're currently servicing now? Also, what we have allotted for our special ed staffing, so our FTE for each building that we set for the district. And then looking at, again, just the comprehensive district needs. So for example, we don't have any students right now that we are servicing that are visually impaired. But if we did, it would, you know, we would factor that in. We don't have that type of service, we'd have to contract out, but again, it just kind of plays a part in the larger picture. If you keep scrolling down, there's just a few more of the, those planning guidelines. So building space and total enrollment that we're looking at, enrollment projections. And then again, maintaining what our continuum of services are in that least restrictive environment for all of the students we're servicing. We have to kind of take all of those things into consideration. And then we also set different caseload ratio guidelines. So in each building, for each of our FTE, we set a certain staffing ratio. So one teacher, four support staff to eight students for some of that early childhood autism significant developmental delay. So not going to go through all of that, but you can see those are the guidelines that we set as, you know, for students in our district or current students that are open enrollment. We, we want to stay around these staffing ratios. If more students move into our district, we will obviously, we've, we've gone over that and it's likely that we would go over that unless we add additional staff. So those are the two components that are, they're comprised of. Like I said, we contract out for occupational therapy, we contract out for physical therapy. And then we have our two speech therapists right now, and then we've also contracted out for a portion of that, just to meet that, that vacancy need as well. So we take all of those things into consideration and then we look at kind of our current projections. So you can see what we set that, that staffing ratio, that caseload maximum for each building and each case manager. We look at the projected caseload for next year. So I roll up kind of all of those current secondary years to third, the fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth. So we look at kind of where they would currently be just with those new numbers. Then we take into consideration kind of the referrals that are going on right now in each building and then kind of look historically. Where we've been at with referrals. So you can kind of see at the elementary level, when you take all of that consideration in, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any open enrollment spaces for, well, elementary, OIS, middle school or high school. We would say we're, we're closed for those special education services because we're at that max capacity. When we factor in, you know, the, the current referrals and then kind of what's happened historically. Questions on that?
And that doesn't mean if an in district student comes in, we don't accommodate them.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, so current students or if anybody moves into our district that has an IP, we look at that IP. We decide if we can adopt the IP as is or if we have to need to just revise it a little bit to kind of meet those, those services, how we deliver them.
Could just verify the prior recommendations.
That would be.
And if it was ever open. Do the costs get charged back to the whole district?
If it was ever open.
So if we took up open enrollment students, say from New Richmond. Do we build back New Richmond for that cost? Do we absorb it all?
And we were open a few years ago when we added staff to OES and OIS, when we added that FTE, we did it because we were, we had over the capacity. So we were open for a little bit, but now we're.
I remember I think last year we got a couple of stops. Not, I'm going to be is the review of the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, day or calendar option. Yay, school calendars. Put a, some notes up here, just so we did survey staff and said, you know, what's. Oh, I was going to go through the notes first. We surveyed the staff originally and said, what's important to you in a calendar? What do you value? What would you like as all your preferences? And then because of the preferences, like, right, we love the spring break, but we want to be ending in May. I needed to come up with two calendars because trying to do all of those things together, you meet all of the needs. You can see floating in service days are positive. Monday in service has been very well received, that came back very clear in the survey. The in-service after breaks, especially just living through one yesterday, the positives from staff about feeling ready for kids and being ready to go. And knowing we're, we're able to have time to help them grow as well as get settled in. You can see a fall break was a high request, three days at Thanksgiving, MLK, day off, students ending in May. And then a day between summer school. So those were, and then nobody asked for a nineteen or twenty day summer school, but I put that on there, it's a request from us. So that's why that's on there like that. So those were some of the pieces, and so then looking at it, comparing the two calendars. So having May, you can see the differences as you scroll down, what's the same? Where, where people return at winter break is a difference. February is the same, March was very different, right? So you have a five day break, consider a spring break, or you have two days with staff, three days with students. And then April being the same, and then you see where May. And then looking at the snow days. And how that factors in, and we still have six snow days built in based on our certain end times that we're currently operating with. So any thoughts, wonders about the twenty-five or twenty-four, twenty-five? May, June.
Why are the trimester days so vastly different?
Because of Thanksgiving and trying to not make it end with working Thanksgiving. Yes, good question. Yep, great question. And then we did a survey with staff. And said, okay, here's your options. What do you, how do you wish this to look?
I'm sorry, hold on, this one.
This is the all things considered. Do you like the June, so all things considered, which calendar do you feel serves students and staff best? So fifty-five percent liked the June of seventy-eight respondents liked the June option. Thirty-three percent likes the May option and eleven point five percent, I'll be content with either option. I'm just that person, right? And then I also thought it was important, right, buildings and other. So whose voice is most in this, and you can see.
And was there always many responses for that first?
No, there are fifty-six responses, but that was a longer one, they like had the like sentences. Right, and this one was literally answer these two questions, thank you. Want to make sure that voice was here. Right, the calendar development over the years has been an interesting piece. At one point it was a union driven process and then it was just created in a room with one person and then it's more collaborative. So again, I was telling Gavin and Emma that it was a lot of common days. This disappears to be a very easy process. It requires lots of success and hours.
So that means. The whole thing, with them having a break the whole week in March. It shortens up the summer school. Which is additional dollars or whatever for the district.
Which is half, half, it's right.
By point six.
Yeah.
Right. But.
It's four hours, so.
Right.
But when you look at FTEs or whatever.
Yeah. But anyways. So we have the snow days, we have six snow days built in here.
Which would be the inferno days or vacation days or both?
It's just snow days built in, so it's the minutes of instruction because now we're not days, remember back in the days, a hundred and eight days required? Now it's minutes of instruction.
Right, base to base list to. So then my question is, and it might be that contractual deal. If, say we didn't have any snow days. Could we still end in May? Because we wouldn't have snowed, we wouldn't have needed those six snow days and we could start summer school earlier?
We, yes, we could, but we would have.
But what does that do with the teacher contract? Are the contract days based on their contracts, right?
Right, because they would have to get to a hundred and ninety. And also that we build the trimester around the hundred and seventy-two days, so.
I know, I was just trying to think of other things to. Like still accommodate everybody.
Because like I know like, right, one of the things they really, staff really said they liked was not having a four day week to start, like coming back with three. Well, you'll see on all of the calendars, it's a four day start with those interim days because in order to get to the hundred and seventy-two and a half, to try to get to where we're going.
Not a day.
Well, and I know from January to May is a long time. So they like a break in March, whether it be two days or five days. They like the break, anyone makes the break a little bit.
Students, any thoughts?
From a student perspective? I hate going into June. June is probably one of my busiest months out of the year because it's, for me at least, it's filled with seminars and tennis camps and tennis tournaments and kind of getting ready for everything to come for the rest of the summer. So I hate going into June. That being said. I would rather have the. I would rather have the extended spring break in March. Not only because it is over the time of my favorite tennis tournament, but. It's all, I also just think it's a very necessary break to have. Even though we do just have the Christmas break going into January. It's often difficult to maintain instruction for a long period of time. And then from a student perspective, when you see that you're going to have. A week in January where you only have one day of school and well, then you're like, well, why am I even going to school this week? There's no, there's no point if it's just for one day, why not just take that day off and then you have three more days of break instead?
You mean, why not plan to be sick that day?
Yeah, yes, why not, why not plan to be sick that day?
In twenty twenty.
Accidentally. And then when you look ahead, you see that you have a two day week in March and you think you might also be coming down through that week too, you know? And then, so now you have students who are intentionally being sick multiple days out of the year just to kind of extend that break.
Which I think is a real thing in the working world too, right?
Yeah.
As, as some employees of certain, you know, if you work an office job, you're going to look to maximize your breaks off.
Yeah.
Not all.
Yeah, and I think it, it, hearing what the students say now. There's a lot of talk about this year's winter break not being long enough, it was, you know, it just went by so fast.
Not being long enough. I'm so excited to see my children back to school today.
From the student perspective, you know, we, we love to have as long off as possible. And so I think you will see on those days that, that you'll get students who voluntarily not show up. Because of those reasons, even if, so even if you account the days in June, I think students will be happier going into June and having long breaks throughout the year.
And I, Gavin, similarly to you, I remember when I was in school, I felt like we started August fifth, which we never started August fifth, but that's what it felt when I was a kid. And we were out in May and I loved that because we could go do Valley Fair, go do things like that in Minnesota instead of school. So I loved that and I loved summer school as a student, like I loved four weeks of summer school. So when I first looked at the June one, I'm like, only three weeks of summer school. But we could go into July, but I know my kids would not want to go into July.
Yeah.
Especially with where the holiday falls, that gets hard. And then the other part of me as a parent looks at that December break as really long for those kids that need school, for food, for stability, for all of that.
That's true.
And so I, you know, kind of said, I really would like to see it end in May. And then when the calendar came out, then I was like, ooh, that's where those days went suddenly. And that, and then I look at long breaks of learning, right? So like eight weeks of learning, five days a week and then a break is really hard. It's hard for the staff, it's hard for the students. And so as much as I would like to see it end in May. I think what I've heard loud and clear is spring break is really warranted and wanted in our.
I think what I've heard loud and clear is, spring break is really warranted and wanted in our industry.
Especially if you don't want to do well at a tennis tournament.
You know, it doesn't sound.
Well, and it's not probably, it doesn't matter when we go, because it's never worth selling for a while, right? If you have people going to state or, you have to wait for it. It just doesn't work.
I always had the opinion that it doesn't matter where you put a break on the calendar, parents can leave their week off and leave their week off, doesn't matter how long it's on the calendar.
And we might get it differently.
Yeah, that's what we're seeing right now with my, you know, with my brother being in college is, we're trying to align our spring breaks to work, and one of them is gonna have to sacrifice, and it's gonna be probably the one that, in the long run, is gonna be the least important sacrifice.
Take them up for the team.
Take them up for the team.
I did have people ask, a few of the owners, spring break with UW system.
Well, that'll depend on which college you go with, because every one of them is different anyway, so if they didn't.
And J-term, and like, and all that, I was like, that's an awesome suggestion. Appreciate his feedback. They did, they said, I know this is selfish, but it'd be really helpful. You're not wrong.
I mean, I, I, I agree, but it's just.
For some kind of rear option. I've always taken the point though to that I'd rather have the longer summer school timeframe, just because there is an impact to that financially, but you know, there is a benefit to the district, right? Whether students or staff want, I think that those terms, but there is a bank for us, right? So. I'd rather have as much summer school as we can do as possible.
But our August days get billed as our school as well, those inter.
True, right.
So, in the, so as I was doing my math, it could, I mean. It ends up kind of being lost eventually, they both calendars start on the same day. But there's three summer school days.
Can I, can I ask why there's no in-service on the twenty-third of August?
No one wants to work on the Friday?
Is that slow start for students and slow start for staff?
It's like the last, you know?
We thought you had a tennis tournament.
I probably will, honestly.
Good question.
Becky, did you give a question about, like, having the Friday before Easter or the Monday after Easter? When you guys did this, it's made some people think.
I'm looking at it, and she is my right-hand person as we counted the days, and yeah, that was, I mean, that's why we made it a floating service day for staff on the twenty-first, that was what intentioned. Because that Monday after was a request, and again, we all say, no, that's not okay, we understand that, we were really trying to build it for students and staff. And the community. Because then the students then get off four days of time. So let's look back at the next meeting. So anything you would like me to do? And then with that, please know, did the same thing for the following year. It's super helpful to do a two-year cycle if possible, for planning, in particular for, I know athletic, for the ex-older families. They often ask, especially at this time of year, can I see your next year calendar for those families that need to plan that? So, would you like to, if possible, after two years? That's a big fail. Is there anything you want me to explore, or you all think about it?
We would like that UW system.
So do I.
I do want you to know, after four people looked at this, we sent it out to staff, and we still had an error, so we fixed it before you saw it today, and it was just like, I love. And the person actually looked at the twenty-five, twenty-six March dates, and said, hey, you have some wording wrong, and I was like, I love you. I love that you took the time to do this for us. All right. Item five, it's engaging continuous improvement of student support systems and programs. Five A is review the policy zero-one-four-one dot one, student representative that board needs. So Chad has worked with students and Scott and I, and we had broken in the summer, so looking at this being the latest iteration. Want to know, Chad, if you want to talk it through?
Well, I think maybe starting with the why, right, so the, this was our first year, well, last year was our first mid-year, I think we started in November. November, December, sometime in the middle of the school year. So we've now had a yearish of, of learning, and this, I think, is to reflect and update what we've learned and, and tried to improve the process going forward. And just putting more structure and rigor around how do we select, what are the roles, requirements, and how do we want the kids to engage in, in the board meetings, so this is just a reflection of that, many hours of discussion and reflection.
This is our policy, based on the new one members. We use theirs as kind of a template, then we used, what, two or three different other school districts?
How many students do you get that apply that maybe want to be?
I think that I had twelve the first year, and maybe six for this year that applied. So it really, I think, will flux each year, but I mean, I would expect to get five to ten each year.
And is this a new requirement that they have to attend the school board meeting?
Yeah.
Or was that in the original?
It was not in the original, it's a, it's a new one, just so they can get exposure to this discussion and it's great to see so many students here, I think.
Right.
Teacher at class. Yeah, so I think.
Teacher, right.
And just getting that exposure to understand if they want to be on the school, a student or up to the school board, what does that look like? What, what happens at these meetings, it's, it's not a mystery. Originally, I think we had, they had to attend three, we pared that back down to just one. We really wanted to encourage people to actually do it, right?
I have a lot of just like clarifying questions, if I can just, so just because of like wording. In the, actually that one in two dot two dot C. Do you like, could you just define what you mean by proof of attendance, like?
So it's, it's grabbing one of the agendas here.
Okay.
And, and bringing it, even extra bonus points if you can get one of the board members to probably sign it that you have you were here, right? I mean, it's, it's really just some sort of evidence that you attended the meeting.
In three, three. With, I've heard about all right, wait, let me read this real quick. So would the students be voting and not attend the executive sessions?
The, this policy here says that there would not be any student voice. I think adding and bringing and getting input on what their thoughts are, but no actual advisory vote, and then also not included attendance in executive review sessions.
And then item six, that there's one. Can you just explain what you, what your vision kind of was for this one?
Are we talking about the brief written summary? It's really to serve as a output of what you've learned and how are you communicating what you've learned?
When you say shared with the student body?
Yes.
Is, are we holding a presentation for the whole school, or is it like a? Just, yes.
It's meant to be generic enough that it's whether it's out through an email or through some other communication channel.
Okay.
To let the student body know what is happening.
Sounds good.
Which hopefully will spark more involvement of the student body to talk with you, whoever's here, and say, hey, these are the things that are happening that would be nice if we had some voice around.
Yeah.
Actually, number five is my favorite one.
Yeah.
That you'll prepare proof on your board. That's mine.
For this, yeah, so you'll come here next, you have an agenda item.
Number eight on that one. Moving right along. I, I feel like there should be some sort of clause that says that they at least should have had to apply for Oscar, because if they're not interested in the student body government, why should we give them, like, why should we expect them to participate in the Oscar activities? If they weren't interested to begin with, and if they weren't even interested in the student body, why should we be giving them a position on the board? I don't know, I just thought that there's a lot of people who really express interest in the student body and would really like to participate in some of these, and then to have someone who doesn't want to participate in school-wide activities but would like to, a position on the board is kind of, I don't know, it just seemed a little weird when I was reading this last night.
But the, the rationale, I think, is you cast the, the net, and this came from our discussions last year, right, of casting a wider net of those that would be interested in being on the board. I would suspect most people would also say they want to be part of Oscar. The question becomes, if they weren't selected as part of Oscar, of being voted in, because we vote three and then appoint two. If they weren't part of those five, historically, they would have just been excluded altogether from anything. Right, so this is to cast that wider net to allow for more inclusion.
I think my thing was like, if they never even applied to be part of that five to begin with, why would we allow them to be a part of, you know, the, the board instead?
But I, I, I think that discussion can happen as we roll this out, this policy doesn't preclude that.
Yes.
It's, but I think that's a great question, if I, if I remember correctly, we had, I think, two that had requested only to be on the board but didn't request to be as Oscar. Because I put that all part of the same application process. So, we, we didn't have a ton of people saying, I only want to be on the board.
Um, next one. Four dot one. This was just, just for me, would this be with the, because we have Oscar voting at the end of the year, would this be with the current Oscar president?
Are you talking about four one?
Four one. Would this be with the current president or the new one that we voted in?
The new one, and so I'd have to change the Oscar process to have that president before the following school year.
Okay.
So it would be, we'd have that combo discussion.
Okay, sounds good, I just didn't know if that, since the the now Oscar president in this example would be a replacement for, like, for the member who wasn't able to show up?
Right, no, it would be, but it would be the person that is for the following school year.
Well, yeah, 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 but so just like in this example, the, the president would be the person who follows through, so then when you induct a new student representative. The the previous president, I feel like, would have the best knowledge to be explaining the board's role and purpose.
Yeah, they can be included, this is just to say that for next year's board, those two have to be there.
Oh, okay, I, I read that as a meeting of just those two for the president to explain, and not.
Who does the orientation meeting?
It would be
Who's conducting the meeting?
It was myself and the principal and the superintendent. So it would be, that selection committee would be part of that, selection committee on two dot three. Plus, I mean, the counselor may not have much to add, but it would be a subset of that. So I mean, they see much of the same thing that a new school board member would see, the same types of materials, have the same discussion. What does the quorum look like, what is Robert's rules of orders, when, when can you speak, when can't you speak, and those types of things.
Second last one, I promise. The five point one is, and I guess this is a pretty open statement, but would you see a way that would where there would be a warning before? Any sort of ground for dismissal, or would that kind of be?
Well, I see this as an educational opportunity, so if, if you're messing up in this, in the classroom, we're having a conversation before we're bringing in the adults at home. But this would be, I think, the same type of situation, if things aren't going well, we're definitely gonna be coaching, teaching, leading. To, to make it a good holistic experience, I guess, for growth, because that's what it's about, so.
Last thing I promise, is the, all the stuff that's crossed out at the bottom.
Yep, that's just last year, that's the current policy.
So, okay, I was just wondering if that is what applied to me in my current term?
Yep.
Perfect.
That's it, guys, thank you.
Anything else from the board on the day?
We had talked about doing an advisory vote or not.
We would prefer not, as the adults in the room, we didn't feel that that was appropriate for students at this point. I'm just saying, if the adults felt, you as a board didn't make that decision, we did not feel that that was appropriate.
I thought you could start that, we have nothing to say, we can't come back to it. I'm sure we can do more and more.
I just wanted to make sure it was discussed and sort of talked about.
I, I actually agree with that, the not having an advisory vote, because I think there's a lot of things that could definitely sway based on two more opinions, and so, but.
And I guess the reason I asked is just I would like to see more involvement or engagement, which we're getting, and I think that whatever number five was, I like so much, the report that you guys present to us will be important. Just trying to find a way more to make it more purposeful, and a way to gain more of the student body voices. And that's why we want to do this, so.
Right? So looking at the clock, it's two minutes to our regular start time. Do we want to buzz through these two and take five? Do we want to pause and come back, what are your wishes for?
Please let's take a reset, please, because I don't want to.
W A S B, annual board development tool. So I'm new to this, so I'm not sure what my role is, so I write it all, and I put little tabs in, and really thought about pieces, but again, I don't I don't know what my role is supposed to be in in defining of what you all consider your strengths and areas for growth, and then what is growth, what like sound like. I would say we, I don't know that we've done a lot of this either as a group, I think it's evolved and changed over time. There's been years that we did it, went, all right, we'll be on in another year, it's where we really still defend it too, so.
I'm not sure we did do it, right?
Do it, do it.
I think it'd be, the importance of it's now would be, we give a report of the city results, right, and then we need to have it some point of all, what we put in there, right?
That's what I would like, I know April sent the results out, I haven't had a chance to look at them yet. I would really like to be able to have, I mean, we used to have like a retreat or just time dedicated to that, I think it's important, I think we need to connect that, and maybe this isn't necessarily connected to this, but looking at our strategic goals and our vision mission, you know, to kind of stray away from that a little bit, so I'm wondering if it's a meeting tied around those things in the board development tool or retreat, whatever the heck you want to call something with who? How bring a piece of that? I, I just we've had so many changes lately, I think it's important that we really look at that data and connect. I do not have a damn clue how we answer those questions.
I don't, I don't remember either, so that's why I asked. I don't, I don't remember either, so that's why I asked the question.
So it'll be interesting to see.
I don't remember.
Exactly.
An idea of how we answer them, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Neither am I, but like anything, I try not to overanalyze it too much and just go with.
Your first instinct. Remember the year Pete took it twice?
Oh, I sure do.
That's my favorite. Like we have six.
It didn't come out different.
Exactly.
So this, do we plan a retreats to go through it, I mean, what's the best way to do that? And by retreat, I mean, just sitting here at this table, going over it, but.
There's no ice cream buddy?
No.
That's the treat part of the retreat.
So maybe we'll look to February, early February?
And I know there's a discussion, do we wait till April when it's new board, but no, I think this is just, we need to touch back on some of that stuff.
Brings us to W A S B Delegate Assembly Review. Look at me, it's not me.
What was the, so I was confused about the literature, are you looking to have a discussion about the whole packet? Review discussion or just who's a delegate?
Well, we already know who the delegate is.
Of course, I would be there that night. Remember?
So who was the backup?
Oh, here we go.
Cause I won't get there till Wednesday, I won't be getting there to Milwaukee till Wednesday night. So, as much as it pains me.
Have you gotten the packet of? Resolutions?
Of course.
Have you opened it?
Yeah, I opened it. Oh, I, I read through it and I just felt bad because.
Good bedtime reading.
Yeah.
Were there any, I mean, the first year I was on, there was one, uh, I don't remember what it was, but it was kind of more at our local level where we cared about it, last year it was like.
Sales tax and a medical school.
Yes, was there any, like you felt hot as a new sort of member in your first year or your first review that you thought?
So I, I scanned through it and I'm not gonna lie, most of the stuff on there, I felt like did not make sense for me to just, you know, honestly care about at all.
Yep.
So.
I asked if it still had the one where the resolution would use a timing back for aid? Cause that was when they didn't give you that, sure, they didn't have that. That's a big one for, for knowing what you're going to season. It doesn't align our calendar, so, at all.
No.
So they were gonna move back the payment or they were gonna move back when they certified the aid on the survey?
And all it would do is say our organization strongly advocates for, to the Wisconsin legislature.
Make sure it could, it could not take action.
Correct. Well, I can go in here and hear it, according to slash, I should, uh, look and see if there's any that they have questions about.
It's just, uh, yeah, and so those that are going down, we've looked at them in the past, we've looked at the word questions, we've looked at the question list.
So you'll be joining us?
Oh.
Oh, oh.
I just said on the line, since I only want to. All right, and there's nothing else on this, we will take a five minute break and resume, actually a six minute, we're losing six.